Let the reasons of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, America, invincible, with the vision of justice and rule.
Is that roll call room?
Mrs. Medina?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rayel?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Move on to the student representatives report. I think it's gonna be Emily's last.
Okay, so I have a lot today. From, there was 675 students that attended and 320 spectators. National Honor Society inductions were on April 30th, and so we inducted the new class, took a senior class. The Olympiad Awards were last week, on January 7th, and so I'll be there. The Teen Leadership Awards were also on May 7th, and that was like the wrap-up of their project, they did the bike share project. The Bloodstone Ceremony, the dedication of the book is will be happening on May 14th. The reality check is on May 20th, now being the Lincoln High School Bill House. Scholarship night is May 21st, and graduation is June 1st, so that's coming up. AP exams, we're into week two of AP exams, and people are ready to be gone. There was a presentation during an ID session to the sophomores about the trimester scheduling, and there was a meeting with a group of sophomores, like a smaller group of sophomores to discuss that. There are some building improvements that happened, there's some painting done in cafeteria area, the front doors are painted, the sign-out front. For student council, of state student council, was really fun, and they are going next year, it was exciting, it was definitely a different experience having it, or being at the Capitol. So, we also elected our new student council officers, and Melissa Schroeder is our president, and Holly Olson is our vice president. And the yearbooks are in, so our distribution date for that is May 23rd.
Would you like to introduce here?
This is Clarissa, and she will give the student information.
Welcome, Clarissa.
Thanks.
Thank you for having me here.
We're friendly, bro.
Then we have a presentation for you, plaque that states an appreciation for service and leadership to the students of the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools and serving as student representative of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School Board of Education. I want to thank you for your input, it was always interesting, and Madison's game is our loss, so don't be as major. Okay, next we can move on to the minutes.
I'd like to ask that the May 5th meeting minutes be held off.
All right, then I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of April 7th, and the special Board of Education meeting minutes of April 28th.
Second. Do we have motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of April 7th, and the special Board of Education meeting minutes of April 28th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And then as far as on the May 5th meetings, I'd like to make a question before we finally give the final opinion. Upon review of minutes at the meeting, special meeting in the open session, I'd like to clarify that my intention at the meeting, when the voice vote was taken, was to abstain from voting. When the voice vote was called, John only heard the gaze, and the eyes and the naze, I did not participate in the vote, but rather abstained from voting. While I did not verbalize my absence abstention at the meeting, I am requesting that the May 5th, 2014 minutes be amended, to reflect that I withheld from voting on the 1% base values increase for the WRE bargaining unit, the 2013-2014 contract.
I guess I'll just remind board members in the future, if you're going to abstain, to please verbalize that, so we know.
Yeah.
Do it.
So can you hear motion, should we reflect that?
I would think so.
I would probably approve the special Board of Education Open and Closed Sessions meeting of May 5th, with an amendment to the open session minutes, to reflect that John had abstained from voting on the WRE agent. Sorry?
Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve the amended meeting minutes of Open and Closed Session on May 5th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you mean roll call minutes?
That's what it says in the page.
All right, I apologize. Could we please have roll call room?
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, so the meeting minutes are approved then, we can move on to comments from citizens and delegations, do we have any tonight, Maureen?
None.
Okay, moves us into community reports, John, Business Services?
Okay, thank you, John. Business Services met at 6:00 PM on May 5th, and we only had one consent agenda item which was tabled, it was the veritime proposal in, it was left forward, but we still had not seen the information that we had requested on the last time. And I also decided, we decided as committee that we'd bring this forward to the full board, probably next month, for discussion, and then also the presentation that we're gonna give. During the meeting, you know, I hacked at the questions that I had, the committee had, and then we also provided some of the documentation, why we're looking at the program from Dan and Business Services, and then we'll have a full presentation to justify this at the full board meeting, and then we can hack on it at that time. I just thought it was too important of a purchase that just the committee would look at it, I'd rather have the whole board look at it, and give the information all together than have it through the committee. And then, further on that, we had updates on purchases reviewed, we have invoices for computer equipment purchases, place studies on services, doctor fees on therapy services, and bill of your own correctional fees, and then the following, last purchase is my favorite one, the copy paper update purchase, which, surprisingly, we only got three bids out of the five members, but we still have, we're still under $20. And then for a future agenda item, we set the date for the trade home tours, which is due second at 4:30, and then we also are working on dates for transportation negotiations. With that, I would recommend, the committee recommends that we approve the minutes of the May 5th, Business Services Committee.
Second.
Do we have motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes for Business Services Committee meeting of May 5th, 2014? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, thank you, John.
You know, there's these questions for veritime proposal, and one of them I have maybe can be asked when it's presented, is, will we save enough to offset the $8,500 annual fee? Is it gonna be a moneymaker, we're not gonna lose money on it? I guess is my answer to that question. And exactly what employees will be covered? What I look at, I'd see 301 right now. Maybe I'm not counting, or counting too many groups, I've got enough groups, I don't know.
Okay, let's move on to Personnel Services.
Okay, Personnel Services met last Monday, May 5th, and we had a really, really long meeting, and we had people coming to visit. And out of that meeting, we have nine percent agenda items, and they are as follows. The committee recommends I move to approve the one support staff retirement. Secondly, the committee recommends I move to approve the one professional staff resignation. The committee recommends I move to approve the one support staff resignation. Fourth, the committee recommends I move to approve the one leave of absence request. Fifth, the committee recommends I move to approve the two professional staff appointments. Sixth, the committee recommends I move to approve the two student appointments effective May 19th, and the one student appointment effective May 28th, as district summer ground workers at the rate of $10 per hour, boarding hours between 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM. Seventh, the committee recommends I move to approve the 15 clerical aides support staff appointments for the 2014 summer school program. Eighth, the committee recommends I move to approve the appointments of four students to the position of summer technology support for 2014 at the rate of $9.25 per hour, starting no later than June 9th, and finishing no later than August 29th. Excuse me? Starting no earlier than June 9th, okay. And then we have consent agenda number nine, and that is approval of various policies, and these are for second reading, so there haven't been any changes from first reading, but they are Policy 731.2, use of electronic surveillance technology in public areas and school buildings and property. Policy 751.21, use of electronic surveillance technology in school bus. Policy 443.3, smoking and/or use of tobacco nicotine products by students. 5522.2, smoking and/or use of tobacco nicotine products by employees. Policy 831, smoking and/or use of tobacco nicotine products on school premises. And finally, Policy 345.11, procedures for academic excellence scholarships. Does anybody want anything held out? I'll second both motions.
Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda items ES 1 through 9. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And then we had some discussion and update on staff assignments for the coming year. We had some correspondence concerning the guidance ratios losing. We were having a guidance retirement, and one of the positions will not be filled, it'll be reduction of one guidance position, but that is gonna be felt across the entire district, it's gonna be dealt out that way. Just for, we still have a very good student ratio when it comes to the ratio between guidance counselors and students, we are better than DC, Point, and Marshfield. There's Arrowhead High School, which has 2,300 students, and they have six counselors, that makes the ratio 383 to 1. With our reduction for next year, we're gonna have a ratio of 290 to 1, so we're still in really good shape even though we're reducing one. There'd be elimination of a special ed position, three librarians were retired, will be replacing two. Staffing the RTI interventionist position in math and language arts at Lincoln High School, this is gonna be reduced, but it's gonna be increased at the elementary level, so it's just a shift of the positions, even though the FTEs will remain the same. We still have some openings yet, at three first grades and a kindergarten, and there would be some perhaps elementary staff reductions and shifting still by now, that's still being worked out with retirements and things coming in. With that, I move that the minutes from the May 5th, Personal Services Committee meeting be approved as printed.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Personal Services Committee of May 5th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, Sandy. Next we have Ed Services, Ann.
Thanks, John. Ed Services met last Monday, May 5th, at, oh, I don't know what time, I was at 4:00. I just thought. There was no public comment. We have two consent agenda items, and I wonder if anyone wants either one of them held out? Okay, our first consent agenda item was on elementary science acquisition, which is the first phase. Dave Bergerson, who's our WRPS Science Coordinator, reviewed Attachment A in our background, which sets out materials acquisition decisions to support revised elementary science curriculum. He pointed out that the majority of the grade levels, we use items purchased from National Geographic, Delta Education, and Engineering is elementary. Katie Billsey Medina questioned why some grade levels were purchasing more items than others. Dave noted that at some grade levels, current materials are still appropriate. Sandy had asked about the number of parents or community members that attended the materials display, and Dave noted that no one attended. Kathy Stevens Hints, our Director of Curriculum, thanked Dave for offering several professional development opportunities this summer, which will familiarize elementary's teachers with the revised science curriculum and the new science materials. So, as a result of that discussion, our review, we recommend approval of Phase 1 of the elementary science acquisition, not to exceed the amount of $174,900 to be paid with curriculum acquisition and referendum dollars. Then we went on to our agenda planners for 2014-15, and Kathy Stevens Hints introduced administrators from the secondary schools to review proposed changes to student agenda planners. She asked board members to address any grammatical or formatting changes with administrators after the meeting. Patty Richay, Assistant Principal, presented for East Junior High, Ron Rasmussen, Principal presented for Lincoln High School, and Brian Oswald, Assistant Principal, presented for Rams. Administrators went through the proposed changes and explained reasoning for the changes, and after that discussion, we recommend and I move to approve the proposed secondary school agenda planner changes, including any changes discussed for the 2014-15 school year. And I would say we recommend and make the motion to approve ES 1 as well.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve ES 1 and ES 2, Maureen, would we please have roll callings?
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Okay, we continue on with updates, and Kathy Stevens Hints presented the 2013-14 WKCE results. Overall, all results were very good. WRPS is ahead of the state average in all areas except seventh and eighth grade math. The board requested more data on the following. Longitudinal data for some student, for same student groups. Longitudinal data for ELL students, achievement gap between males and females, if there is one, and impact of students not tested and virtual students. We went on to talk about the WSAS, which stands for Wisconsin Student Assessment System for 2014-15, and Kathy reviewed the significant changes in student testing for 2014-15. Several assessments will be added or modified for the upcoming school year. Information was shared on the Smarter Balance Assessment, ACT Aspire, ACT, ACT Work Keys, Dynamic Learning Maps, access 2.1, 2.0, PALS, and WKCE. Administration is concerned about the impact the additional testing will have on technology availability and instructional time. And with that, the committee recommends and I move the option of the minutes of the May 5th Educational Services Committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee meeting of May 5th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. And, next we have agenda referrals and information requests. Anybody have anything? We move on to our legislative agenda. Maureen, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do, John. I'd just like to share a couple of issues that were included in the legislative update, I went on the WASB website from May 9th, and the first one that was, I found interesting, was an Assembly Task Force that spent several months researching challenges facing Wisconsin's rural schools, released its long-awaited report this week. In his recommendation, Representative Rob Schmiering, who's a Republican from Reimider with the task force chair, he called for creating a new version of the TEACH program to provide more funding for broadband access, equipment, and training to facilitate technology-empowered learning in rural schools. Other task force recommendations included providing more state aid for transport transportation, tweaking state imposed revenue limits to use a five-year enrollment high rather than the current three-year average, and applying a weighing factor for school enrollment in small school districts. It also included allowing school districts to fund co-curricular activities using community service lobbies, which would be fundative, freeing small rural districts from certain mandates, authorizing school districts to adopt whole-grade sharing agreements as an alternative to consolidation, and creating a loan forgiveness or grant program for rural teachers as a way to help rural districts attract and retain quality teachers. However, the timing of the release of the report, the legislature adjourned until January, so that means there will be no legislative action likely until the 2015 at the earliest. But the representative did say that he truly believes, what he put in the report, it'll have serious traction in the next session. He believes it's a step in the right direction. And State Senator, oh, State Senator, State Superintendent Tony Evers commended the bipartisan support for advancing rural education. As always, one of the major challenges will be to find the resources to adequately fund the recommendations that have costs attached. Democrats who served on the bipartisan task force have released their own report, they say the report doesn't address declining enrollment and flaws in the state funding And in an interview with reporters, Speaker Boss said the reason they wanted the report done at this time was to work with the governor to prepare for his budget for next fall. He says we want some of these things to be included. Boss also said, following the budget, he will focus on educational issues in the next legislative session, such as school accountability, expanding school choice, and even reevaluating school funding. He's also open to looking at tweaking the funding formula. I guess we'll need to continue to stay alert and pay attention. The other issue, Assembly Speaker Boss addressed the State Republican Convention last weekend in Wisconsin, and he voiced frustration over the compromise on voucher schools that passed the legislature last year as part of the 2013-15 state budget. The deal expanded the voucher system statewide, but capped new participation to 500 students in the first year, and 1,000 in the second year and thereafter. Boss says we should never have had a cap, the next time around, the cap will be gone. In his address, Speaker Boss also criticized the national Common Core education standards, policy that has drawn fierce criticisms from Tea Party activists who describe it as a federal takeover of local education. Boss says we don't need Common Core because Wisconsin expects higher standards, so I guess we need to, I thought maybe that was gonna change, I think I've heard him speak a little differently, we'll have to see what happens.
All right. Thank you, Maureen. I guess we can move on to bills.
I would make a motion that the receipt be noted, and the bills be paid as promptly.
We have a motion, a second, that the receipt be noted, and bills paid, and noted in our packet. Maureen, would we please have roll call?
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Can I have a, I have a question. Looking at what we pay for unemployment insurance, we always pay, let's see, we pay one month in arrears, we pay as we go, and we're looking at like in January, we paid $244. Then for February unemployment, it was $1,230.30, and for March, it's $1,536.91. And I, in Personal Services, I haven't seen a lot of people losing their jobs, so it's being accounted for by?
The state accounts for it.
But who's making the claims?
The claims are coming from a number of different sources. One of them is this, one of them is sub-teachers, a small amount of that, some of it is a coach who apparently must have been laid off from his regular job, but then he also collects against us. Another one is, let's see, a student who worked for us last summer is collecting, as a summer helper, and then there's the regular other support staff that have worked for us in the past.
But why would it increase, I mean, it was only $244, that was, you know, a student from last summer.
Some of those people have been just laid off, for instance, a coach, I believe, so I mean, some of those things have just, it must have occurred recently.
So this?
It may be through other employment that they've lost their job, and then what they do is they go back on every employer that they've had with them a certain amount of time, so we don't always control that.
Okay. When it comes to substitute teachers, how many days, is it consecutively or cumulatively that do they have to work in order to collect?
There is no cumulative minimum per se, but they have to reach a certain amount in order to collect from us, and I don't know exactly what that amount is, but the majority of our subs do reach an amount where, if they wanted to, I think they could collect against us. If they're working on a regular basis, they're working every week.
They're working one day a week? Have you heard?
Well, I don't know what the exact amount is, they have to work, they have to work six months or something like that before they can come back against us, and I don't know how many hours they have to work in that period of time.
It depends upon their recorded earnings, and one of the examples in which that can vary would be our sub-teachers who are normally working irregular intermittent amounts of time, and then all of a sudden, we have, we have an opening because of a medical leave, for example, we put somebody into a long-term sub-position, and now they work every day for an eight-week period. Now, the regular employee returns to work, that sub, who normally might be working three or four days a month, who's now worked every day for eight weeks, that becomes their, there's a new calculation for what their monthly income is, and their potential unemployment goes way up in those situations, so. But to come back to your original question, it's people who are working in limited-term positions for us that, in the last few months, the figures that you talked about, it's all employees that have worked limited-term assignments, it's not any of our people who would have been laid off for the previous year.
The other thing about the subbing is, they don't necessarily have to just sub for our district, they could be subbing with other districts to accumulate the number of hours they need. So in other words, they could be working for Stevens Point, or McCusor, or someone.
And so, what district could be paying the unemployment?
All three of us could be paying.
We'd be responsible for our portion, whatever they report is income they receive from us, that's just like the example that Dan referenced before, if it's, if it's somebody that's working in a job in the community, and they're also, they're a ninth-grade girls' basketball coach for us, for example, and they're laid off from their regular position, they're asked to report their earnings, what they made from us as a coach would be included in the earnings that we would then become responsible to pay unemployment for.
And for how long?
As long as they're laid off, I mean, there's a set period of time, I mean, if they could be out of work for a month, they get a new job, and then it stops.
Right. But we had, you know, those, all those extensions of unemployment within the last year, would we be obligated to pay that during all those federal exchanges?
I mean, if you're referring to, for example, the teachers that we had, I mean, through the previous school year.
No, not that, no, just, you know, just, the unemployment compensation in itself had many extensions.
In the benefits.
In the benefits. Would we, are we subject to all those extensions, too?
As long as the state is liable, I mean, as long as we're liable under the federal law, yes, because the state would have to pay that.
I think the one thing that people don't understand, our employees don't understand, is that it comes directly out of our budget. We are not like private employers who send money down to the state, and there's a pooled amount. I mean, we pay, as you said, as we go, and so it comes directly out of our fund tab.
And even though we pay as we go, about two, three years ago, we had got excess $18,000 for interest.
Paying interest on the pool that's coming.
Yeah. I guess, I just have some problems with it, as you can tell.
We're frustrated, too.
Wow. Is there, okay. Can we get a recap of what we paid for unemployment in the last 12 months sometime, when it's convenient? And I don't know if you can break it down or not, but just?
By categories of employees, or?
Well, just, versus people that were truly let go of their job in the district, and those that lost some other job and are also recouping from us, I'm just anxious to see.
Or perhaps the difference between what would be a regular job versus the limited-term positions we talked about?
Yeah, like that.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
All right, thank you. I'll push this into new business, our first item for discussion, possible action to approve recommendations concerning the 2014-15 district budget shortfall.
If you would take a look at the spreadsheet, that at the very bottom has 238 on it. What I'd like to do is just walk you through, the first portion of this will be how we came to the deficit that we were currently trying to meet for next year. Our declining enrollment amount was 1,200,000. Our declining enrollment amount was 1,200,000. Health insurance, Affordable Care Act is what ACA is standing for there, to be compliant. We're looking at 1,530,000 dollars in renewal. Our dental insurance, dental insurance is going to be a 42,815 renewal. Supplemental pay, that's DEUs and credits that teachers take, and some years will be approved, made 125 per each, and up to six per employee. And so we calculated the total amount. And I'll come back to that in a little bit, but that's, that would be the total amount, 350,000. Transportation will be another expense. We don't know what that might be yet, because that has yet to be negotiated, and I think Dan will be talking to committee members at calendar time towards the end of this meeting to confirm a date. And then finally, staff raises. First sheet I gave was a 1.66, and that was this year's. So that was an error on my part, and it's a 1.46. That total is 463,827 if we were to go forward. So that would be the full deficit of 3,112,607 plus any transportation expense. So how did we, how did we get there? And we think we're very close. In order to meet the deficit, we looked at what savings we had. And Ed informed me that at the Boys and Girls Club, we were saving approximately 20,000. In food service, Julie Witty is funding something differently, and so $6,000 worth came out of the general fund and went into the food service fund. Department and building budgets are all going to be cut by about 100,000. And I want to tell you that these numbers aren't exact to the penny, but they're very close. You know, they alter a little bit. Maybe it's 19,999 instead of 20,000, but we sort of round as we work through this. Special ed preschool dollars, there's going to be a shift there, which will save fund ten, again, the 12,000. With the snow day, it's about 25,000 a day, so we had two of them that we did not make up. That's 50,000 that we saved. Doesn't account for the next two, and we'll get further down. I have another amount. Into the OPED fund, due to the change the board made a couple of years ago with regard to how we pay that in for teachers and what we paid at 85% of the set amount, Dan indicated he put about 203,800 less. So that's, that's a savings for us. Some of the stipends that go to department chairs, CII chairs, and cadres and buildings will be reviewed. We anticipate a savings of about 20,000. HRA, we had some carryover from last year and additional savings this year to the 2 million two, which is really big, and that's really the biggest help that we have. We don't anticipate carryover into next year, so that balance will be diminished next year, but hopefully it will continue to save us. The staff retiree savings, it's resignations and retirements all bundled in together. In some cases, as Sandy alluded to, we're not replacing people. For example, one guidance counselor and one librarian piece were recommending that we not replace those, and that just through attrition, natural attrition, we have some savings. We also have a couple of resignations that we're suggesting we not replace. I think one or two, one is in the special ed area. We also cut a position in special ed. It was an IEP coordinator position that was technically put into place when we had an audit some years prior to my being here. And we've gone through the audit, and those duties will be passed on to Leslie and Trudy. They'll be absorbing those duties. So that position, we recommend cutting, and the individual then retired indicated that that was, was how she would proceed. There's one other position I think that we're not, Ryan, can you figure that we're not replacing? I can't think of what it is off the top of my head.
Let me move on.
Well, we had, well, that's, that's coming under clerical.
Okay.
How many special ed positions did you raise for June?
Oh, we have, well, we have one that, we have one that's, that resigned and we're replacing, but we're not hiring from the outside. We're moving people internally. We've had no layoffs or non-renewals this year, because what we're doing when somebody resigns or retires, we're either not replacing or moving people internally and making the cuts that way. So we are estimating that we're at about 584,000 in savings there. With the clerical piece, that savings comes from, Ed had a secretary resign, and we have a partial savings there, because what we've done is asked Kim Schenk, who works at the PAC and is our athletic director's secretary, she works seven hours a day. We've asked that she work eight hours a day and pushed her year-round rather than her usual calendar or school year job. So she's picking up some of those duties, and we're just kind of doing it on a trial basis to pick up the, Cindy, what he was at Buildings and Grounds, and she, a lot of her position was doing the facility rentals, and Kim has picked that up. Name badges was another piece, and we're still, we're still kind of feeling our way through that to see if maybe HR is going to pick up doing name badges upon hire. And so there are some other duties as well. But Kim is kind of back and forth between the two locations right now, and it's kind of on a trial run, but we think that we'll be able to make it work. The deductible change, we are suggesting a deductible change that would save us about 229,000, and the current deductible for staff is 3600. We're suggesting a 500,000, and we'll be talking about that, explaining that to you in a bit. The possible less makeup day, I put that in in that way because I wasn't sure that we were going to not come back that half-day at the end, but with minutes being reviewed, we were able to cut that short. So that's another 25,000, and that's essentially the bussing that we don't pay then, and food service personnel don't come in. That doesn't affect us. Our budget directly to clerical doesn't come in, so the overall savings is about 25,000. We are getting increased categorical aid. We got 75 dollars last year. We're getting another 75 on top of that this year, totaling 282,000 or 382,000. So we have towards a deficit of about 2,870,000, leaving a deficit of 238,153. However, that number will be somewhat higher because we don't know what transportation's going to be. But it does not include, if you go back up to that supplemental pay, we don't anticipate paying out that full amount. Last year, we paid out 86,000. We think it might double this year, could be more than that. We're not clear on what that amount's going to be, and we won't know that until September. But that could help, you know, depending on what we pay out there, the difference would then go, of course, towards the deficit, what we don't pay out. There may be some further staff savings as we're working through the final, final steps in that. And then finally, we'll be coming to you in short order in June for a levy setting meeting, and at that time, we're going to recommend that we do levy for debt service, which we have not done in the last couple of years. And we've been paying some of the debt right out of the general fund. Well, that would be about 375,000, so that alone would eliminate what you see here at the bottom of, as a deficit. So at this point in time, I would ask if there are any questions or concerns, and if not to go ahead and approve what we've done so far, and that we would then come back to you regarding that 238,000 and perhaps a debt June budget hearing meeting.
John?
Yes, Lee.
I have one question. On the department building budget spread out among all the schools is probably not as significant as it could be, but is that going to shift? Is that something that would shift to teachers to get rather than go without? If they need something for their classroom?
Well, that's hard to say. And the reason I say that is that it really depends on if a department, say, a school like Lincoln, for example, loses $10,000, you know, how Ron decides to distribute that then with what's remaining is going to be at a building level, and it, you know, it may vary. Teachers are, we buy stuff anyway, but it's not intended to shift to teachers. That becomes an out-of-pocket expense. I mean, we will certainly be purchasing the things that, you know, they need to do the job.
And the department chair, 20,000, is that going to weaken that to the point that people don't want to take those positions?
That may happen. I don't know.
Or is 20,000 a significant part of that?
What is the total, about 40,000? About 40,000?
The bulk of that is department chairs, and we're looking at adjusting the stipend schedule, which could equate to, you know, we looked at a cap, I think it's about 500 per department chair reduction from what they're currently giving as a stipend. We have a, we have a stipend schedule where their, their pay a stipend depended upon how many people are in their department. And I think the low end, it's a thousand dollar stipend. On the high end, it's, it's 2,500 stipend. You know, so someone who has a department of, you know, three or four people may get a thousand dollars. Someone who's got a department of 12, 13 would get 2,500. And we're looking at reducing that schedule across the board 500. So that low end would be 500, the next step is, and so on, with 2,000 being the cap.
Is it accurate to say, look, what's going on now with all of the changes in ways of measuring things, they have to work harder than they used to with all the stuff that's coming down?
I think that's the case with every position in the school district, every position in the school district. I think that's true, Larry.
I've sort of known that kind of care before, didn't it, or that was what?
We...
Like a year or so?
I think it's been longer than that.
Three years. Has it been that long? It hasn't been since I...
We, yeah, I thought it may have been. We used to have, I think, a percentage system similar to co-curricular contracts, and we went to the stipend system, which was a reduction, yes. So this would be a second round of reducing the, the compensation for those assignments.
I have concerns in Ed's department. He's going from a full-time secretary to one that's just adding an extra hour a day?
He has two full-time secretaries out there. So one is still there.
Okay.
And the other one we're subsidizing, or not subsidizing, but filling in with this other individual who will work year-round, and she has not in the past.
Oh, so...
We don't know yet how it's going to go, Sandy, so we may be coming back to you to say, we really need a half-time person there in addition, but we're not sure.
Because just having been toward that in December, it's like, holy cow, it is massive and complicated, that whole...
None of these are popular, and it's not going to get any easier next year either. We're already looking at, you know, at least $2 million in deficit at some point. We're going to be right back to the drawing board.
Maybe Mr. Boss could come and help me with our budget. Could send an invite out?
If there are things you'd rather we do differently, we certainly consider that. I mean, we've worked quite, you know, quite a bit of time on this and are bringing to you what we think is our best scenario at this point.
I'd like to thank the administrative team for all their hard work on this, because I'm sure none of this is popular or enjoyable. So, thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve the 2014-2015 budget recommendations as presented decision?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion second to approve the budget recommendations presented. Can I, would you please have your call?
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Deductively, yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have discussion and possible action to approve our application of the employee health insurance.
I don't believe there are any handouts on the regulations that we have. I'll just speak to what we're looking at for our health insurance protocol at this point in time. And this has been quite a bit of time spent looking and focusing on this. We were fortunate when we went to the WEA trust for our health insurance the year prior to have a second-year renewal cap of 12% going in initially to our review. That, that's what we were looking at, was right at the 12% for the renewal, with one small adjustment in conjunction with having a plan that's Affordable Care Act compliant. We did have a minimal reduction below that 12% renewal. So we are looking at from WEA, 10.88% renewal in the on a health plan, that would be the same design as what our employees have had currently. The one adjustment from that would be, as Dr. Menardi referred to, is our adjustment on the deductible, the actual deductible that our employees experience. The, as far as the health plan design that we have with WEA trust from distributing that plan design with WEA, we have deductibles of 2,000 for a single plan, 4,000 for a family plan, but we did put in an HRA to pick up much of that deductible amount. It has been reimbursing or covering for employees for a single plan to date. After 300, it's paid, $1,301 up to 2,000 before reaching the deductible with WEA. And on a family plan, it was $601 up to 4,000. What we're recommending is adjusting that, those marks up to 500 and 1,000 rather than the 300, 600 we've been at. And that equates to the one savings line that Dick May had on the green sheet for your leisure review.
We did explore many different designs, different coverages. In the end, I think Ryan brought back to the, to the committee that this was the most budget-friendly, the least disruptive to people. And survey was sent out to staff in regards to changes that, let's face it, nobody wants to make, but this was probably the most palatable survey results showed, so...
It should provide better continuity for our employees as well, because they're not going to be seeing a significant change in the, in the design of the plan. I mean, obviously, the deductible amount is going to impact them directly and immediately. The increased deductible would take effect on July 1 with, with this renewal. But outside of that, as far as what our employees have become accustomed to in the last year on co-pays for doctor visits, what the drug card is that we have in the plan right now, co-pays for things like, like emergency room visits and things of that nature, that's all the same. So from that perspective, the design, our employees will be familiar with, and will have another year to go with this particular renewal.
I would just like to clarify, it impacts every employee in this room, too. He's not talking about a group of other employees. It includes all employees in the district.
All, all district employees that are currently on the group health plan. Some other things that I would add is, we did review pretty extensively a lot of these details with the district insurance committee that has representation from all of our employee groups. John Krings serves as the, as the board rep, and the committee does recommend going with this renewal, with this design plan and this renewal, based on everything that we've reviewed and looked at. Dan and I have had a number of meetings with, with our broker, M3, Jamie McDonald and John Price, and we really do not believe that, even if we were to go to bed this year, that we would be getting a better renewal than, than what we were guaranteed from WEA trust in that second year when we signed up with them a year ago. So we really don't believe we could do any better. In fact, we're, when, we've done some comparisons to our neighboring school districts, our, the premiums for our plan, for comparable plans are better than Stevens Point and Marshfield. Our premiums are lower, so we're in very good shape with the renewal that we're looking at right now.
And our loss ratio last year was very high. What was it they projected? It would have been a 22% increase if we were going straight off from that, off from utilization and loss ratio correction.
What has been the staff at the Democratic piece of the service that they've gotten this year?
That would, that was a part of the survey that, that we had administered, and yes, a significant number of our employees, I think it was just under 80%, had indicated they were satisfied or very satisfied with the WEA trust.
Did we, did we look at 400, 800 deductible? I mean, going from three to five and six to 1,000, what's, is there a major difference? Or is there a difference of 400, 800? I mean, that's the only thing that bothers me, is the big jump in deductibles.
I, to be honest, John, when we were looking at, I think this was the smallest increase we were looking at. We were actually looking at going higher. We were looking at as much as 750, 1,500 at, at one point in time. I think this was coming down from some of the, the early reviews that we were... I think this was coming down from some of the early reviews that we were taking a look at.
It's like bitter pill to swallow.
It just keeps-
Just keeps getting harder.
Need a motion on this?
Yes.
How do we approve the modifications to the employee health insurance deductible?
Yes, so.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second to approve the modifications to the health insurance deductible. Trying to state his demands, I believe it was five hundred, four thousand. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Ryan. Next, we have discussion and possible action to approve the dental insurance renewal rate.
Ryan and I visited Delta Dental a week ago Monday. Met with some of the representatives there. And we also had M3, our consultant, with us when we met with them. One of the proposals that they proposed was possibly self-funding. We might realize some savings from that. Majority of their insurers are self-funded. And there are districts much smaller and thus they're self-funding the dental. So it's based on that, we had a discussion with them. Our renewal is that they, Delta Dental proposed to us was a seven and a half percent increase. M3 reviewed that renewal and determined that self-funding could come in slightly lower than that, a possible savings of twelve thousand dollars. So what we're proposing is that we do self-fund. Delta Dental then would charge us each week for the claims that have been submitted and verified by them and deducted directly from our checking account. And similar to the HRA, similar to the way the HRA works. And we're proposing that we just charge a premium that we would have been assessed had we stayed self-fully funded. And then at the end of the year, see if there's a savings based on the activity for the year. And possibly some money we could then use to help offset the budget increases we'll have next year. And so that's what we're proposing at this time. We are recommending that we self-fund our dental.
Do any board members have questions about self-funding?
Yeah, explain it a little more. Explain it a little more.
Oh, explain it a little more. Dental is a relatively stable insurance. In other words, from year to year, there's not a lot of fluctuation. People go in annually to have their cleanings or twice a year to have their cleanings. And it doesn't, there's not a lot of fluctuation in the activity in a dental plan. Based on that, they can project pretty closely to what the activity is going to be. However, the insurance company always builds in a margin. We will have to pay a policy, a policy charge per policy of four dollars and twenty-eight cents per month. Four or five? Four dollars and twenty-eight cents? Four dollars and twenty-eight cents per policy per month to have them administer our plan. And then they will, based on the claims that are sent in, they actually deduct that amount each week and then monthly for the fee from our checking account that we designate for them.
And what if the expenses go beyond what we have in our checking account?
It would, it would cost the district, it would cost the district money.
And I know that generally these bigger providers or the bigger insurance companies are getting better discounts. They'll basically dictate to the dental office how much they'll pay for cleaning. Are we still going to get those discounts or does that go away?
We will still get the, excuse me, we still get the same discounts, everything that we're currently receiving from them. There's no change. Our employees, let me explain this to you. Our employees will not notice a change. They can use the existing card that they have based on their subscriber number on that card. Even though the group number changes, the subscriber number remains the same. And they can use their dental card the same way they have been. So there's no change. An employee will not notice any change.
What, electing services, are there any whitening and seasoning and all this business?
No change in services. There's no change in the plan at all.
It's very basic?
It's a basic plan. It does not include whitening.
Plus dental is capped at a thousand dollars a year.
It's, yes.
Anything beyond a thousand, you pay.
I believe it's six hundred. I believe it's six hundred dollars per individual. And that's why it's relatively stable on the charts.
So if we go along with this, we can take another twelve thousand off the deficit?
Well, we'd apply that, we'd apply that next year.
Next year.
Any other questions?
Here in my line, I would make a motion to approve the dental insurance renewal rates and self-funds.
Okay, we have motion second to approve the dental insurance renewal rate. And that included a seven point five percent increase. At current rates, along with being self-funded by the district. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have updates and reports on potential modifications being considered for the sick leave bank.
In your board packet, you would have received a almost golden rod or yellow type colored sheet that shows the current description of the district-wide sick leave bank that's in operation or that was put in operation in the district. In addition to that, prior to committee night, distributed a two-sheet white paper copy stapled together, recommended update that we put together related to the sick leave bank that we have available for employees in the district. Just a couple of items that I touch upon from a historical perspective is that the sick bank has its origins with the WER, WREA teacher union contract from some years ago. There was language written into how that operated. And prior, I should say, following the CBA from oh-seven to oh-nine, there were updates to that original system that was put in place, which resulted in this yellow copied sheet of paper that you have for what's in place today. Not only was that benefit expanded in options available to employees, but it went district-wide, originally was just available to the teacher group, it went to an all-employee arrangement. What we have for you tonight is, this is an updated report. We're just presenting this as a proposal that we, we're not looking for action this evening. We will be coming back in June hoping for approval. So I just got a few details reviewed today unless there are more questions. But as the system's been put in place and been operating in the last few years, it has grown in utilization and it is becoming a cost to the district. The original intent of this, when it was put in place or the, back when it was within the teacher group, was, for example, to be utilized and made available for the employee and the employee only. The last update that went into place expanded the availability of it to include family members outside of the employee. Part of the intent behind this was for individuals that may be low on sick leave that they have available to themselves to be able to try to help them get by until a long-term disability policy would become available. You know, as well as the fact that it was really intended originally to be for catastrophic events, life-threatening events. And the, because the access to it has been expanded beyond those limited use intentions, it's gotten to the point where it's being accessed pretty extensively and is creating the situation where we've, it's kind of basically grown to where the district's providing a short-term disability benefit. And that's really not what it was intended to be about. So the main adjustments that we're looking at is to bring it into more of a district-wide bank that employees could donate to rather than specific circumstances and specific individuals. As well as narrowing it down to where it's a benefit that's available to the employee for their catastrophic events and employee only, not extended to family circumstances and situations.
I'm just back at what Ryan is saying because I offered the initial language all over the years ago with representatives in the WREA to put it together and negotiate. At that time, it was strictly for the teachers and strictly for the employees, not for extended family members.
When we, when we worked on drafting this recommended update, what we did do actually is begin with the original document that Colleen just referred to that was in place with the WREA contract that ended after the oh-seven, oh-nine CBA. The sheet that I handed out at the beginning of the meeting that is stapled together, if you look to the second page, there's the back copy. What you'll see in that edition, similar to how we bring forward word policy changes where we have the original language and then we slash out wording and bold face edits. This second sheet is starting with the original sick bank language that was in the teacher contract back in the oh-seven, oh-nine CBA. And we edited out from that original language, you know, editing things like, you know, taking out the word teachers and putting in employees because the intent of this is to be available to all employee groups as well as adjusting some other, the other language within that. So that's what page two of this additional handout reflects. And then the cover page is just if it were all cleaned up in one, one split-flowing document, what that would look like if those edits went through.
So this, I have a question, will do I? How are we paying non-employee sick leave? You're saying we were paying for somebody's hospital or something?
In other words, the original intention of this was that if he was an employee had a catastrophic illness, life-threatening illness, you were eligible to take some sick days. Now it's come out as if you have a child who has that illness, you take off and you're sick leave to be gone with your child who's ill. And that was never the intention of this.
And it basically comes down to the types of leaves that would otherwise, that are, that qualify for family medical leave. And we do have some situations where it's turned into an annual event. And obviously, if the individual has expended their leave down to zero and then, you know, each year is looking at getting sixty additional days beyond what they would be entitled to as an individual. And it's for certain family circumstances that are not impacting the specific employee themselves.
And again, it really was intended for catastrophic, life-threatening illness. You still have some flexibility in situations where-
Oh, yeah. And again, as Colleen is alluding to, this really was intended. We have an employee that can, you know, that comes up with a life-threatening disease or accident or some situation where we've got this flexibility to help get them a little bit closer to a long-term disability benefit if they don't have ninety days pulled up to get them to that point in time. And they clearly are not able to work because of the situation that they're facing. We, we still will have people that are drawing on this. We have had circumstances this year where we've got employees that would still qualify even under this new language.
So we're not asking for action tonight. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, give you kind of the background, some information for you to think about it. And we'll likely bring it back next month.
Our recommendation would be that we put this into effect with the July one effective date.
Any questions? We can move on to further direction regarding facility group work.
So we started this process a couple of years ago. Tom, how is that we're still here? And he started looking at all our buildings and maintenance needs and things that were not done as a result of having run a referendum and had a listing of all the dollars and cents that we take. And then Ed came on board and so we started a revisit of those items. I sent something to you that would give you an idea. We met several, on several occasions. Their committee members are listed, Ed Allison, Phil, Ryan, Trudy, myself, Rod, Leslie, Paul, Brian, Ron, Patty, Kathy, and Dan. At times, certain members couldn't be there, but in general, we all met together. We talked about several different topics. And as you can see, we talked pros and cons of several different configurations. Everything from a early childhood five-K center to a four-K sixth grade. All kinds of different configurations. Basically, what we're doing is looking at this as part of our strategic plan. We were to look at our facilities. For long-term savings and efficiencies, we feel obligated to investigate these kinds of things so that we are presenting efficient use of resources. This, any change that we were, we would bring forward to you would not be for next year. I want to make that clear to anybody in the public and anybody in this room. We're not looking to bring forth a change for next year. We see status quo in our buildings for next year. If we were to make a change, we would be looking at the year after, potentially. This is not, any change that we make here, and again, tonight, we're not, we're not going to make any changes, but any direction we might go is not going to solve an entire budget problem. So I don't want you to be looking at this as, oh, this is how we're going to solve the budget because that's not going to happen. There will be some savings certainly, but it's more a matter of looking at our buildings and are we using them as efficiently as we could? When we have this discussion, we can do, you know, if we come up with some kind of a recommendation to you, we could do it all at once. We could do it as a phase-in. We could do step, you know, one step one year and another step the next year. We could have some kind of long-range discussion about where the board, you know, sees this going. Or if we do nothing, there will also eventually be a cost. So I think we need to have an active discussion about it because if we, you know, that would be one option and that is to do nothing. But you'll have buildings then that you'll, that will need repair and ongoing maintenance that may not otherwise, you know, be subject to that. We may at some point need to ask you for some expertise from the outside. We have data from two thousand five, two thousand four, two thousand five capacity numbers, you know, what it is per square foot, how many students would fit programmatically, et cetera. Those things change over time and we may, we may need to ask you for that permission. So we looked at all the buildings and what they were costing in utilities and maintenance needs and so on. We reviewed restructuring options. And in fact, option number one from two thousand five was implemented and that was making Rams a six, seven, and this building an eight, nine. In two thousand five, option two presented was to move the ninth grade to Lincoln High School. At that time, it was shared with you that TED rooms had been used for, were currently, at that time, were being used for EEN and ELL. When the building was initially put together, only four rooms were being used. So you can see where there's a programmatic shift. Five rooms were used for technological reasons. Zero were used, they were all classrooms prior to that. So in other words, computer labs and things of that nature. Five classrooms over there are being used for special programs such as the volunteer, student volunteer group, CCHI, our central city health institute, in-house suspension, that type of thing. Rooms were scheduled at about eighty percent. Now, last week, I talked with someone who indicated, and they are, someone who does the, I don't remember if he was an architect or someone who just helps you work through a process of building facilities, but indicated that normally buildings are scheduled at eighty percent and that's considered a capacity that you don't schedule any building at a hundred percent where all rooms at all times are being used. Fundamental question, I think, that we have to talk with you about this evening is, you know, does ninth grade belong, in your minds, at the high school? So that we have a nine-twelve building. Back in two thousand five, when this was brought forward as an option, it indicated that most high schools in Wisconsin are currently four-year high schools. Ninth grade students are earning credit towards graduation. They participate in several, but not all, high school co-curricular activities. They participate in several, but not all, high school curricular activities. So, there are a variety of things, you know, pros and cons. We also included, if you return the page, kind of a listing then of pros and cons that you sent, it had, just gave you something to look at if you were to go with a 9-12. And I don't think I need to read, read those over to you unless you have a question about those.
I think, Ted, I did, I did, what about, there's two areas that I don't see that I know were discussed back then, locker room space?
Well...
And in lockers themselves.
And Ron, I, I know we've talked about the girls locker room athletic facility is going to need some upgrading regardless of what happens. But as far as lockers, I believe we have enough.
We have 1,915 lockers.
Okay. 1,900.
And 15.
And 15.
Good example.
And locker room.
Other number.
But, but, yeah, you just go to the last one, Ron.
No, you don't, there's a gap, so.
But locker room, you mean, as in, fire?
Fire and locker room space and...
Thoughts about that?
Yeah, in the, we don't feel there's an issue in the male locker room. That locker room was remodeled, what, Ryan, how many years?
Four?
Four.
Four years.
Four years ago.
We have a call point.
Yeah. We do have to do something with the female locker room. Moving freshmen or not moving freshmen, it's an area of concern. Locker rooms are different than the male locker rooms. Transferring kids in and out of those current lockers, there's enough in there currently, depending upon what we would do for a possible renovation, plays into that. Our girls locker room is not very well set up for having, hosting athletic events because there's not a divider like there is in the male locker room.
Before you sit down, so philosophically, you have to think about whether or not ninth grade goes to Lincoln. Ron, did, you did schedule, how did you do that?
I took this year's master schedule at Lincoln and then I took East's master schedule of their current ninth grade. And, you know, there is some fluctuation in that because East does run classes with eighth and ninth graders, it's, it's not an exact. And the East schedule does fit into Lincoln. There are some modifications that would need to be made with some rooms. We are, we would need to add a science lab at Lincoln and we've looked at that already. Ed and I have had multiple conversations with that may involve, and it may also involve dividing a few rooms such as the 112 study hall on first floor which may need to get divided into two classrooms, either with a permanent wall or a movable, movable wall. It does schedule us tight at Lincoln and I, I don't want to say what percentage it is because to be honest with you, I didn't sit down and figure out what rooms. I just said already, East needs this many science classrooms. If I go through my schedule, this is how many classrooms I have empty during the day. For example, this current year's schedule, I could fit all of East's science at Lincoln, but every one of the science rooms would be used every hour of the day. And we do know that we've added a science requirement in for, for three credits and so we know there's going to be a necessity for an additional science classroom. And so, that's the area that was probably the, the tightest to look at is in the science area.
You think only one?
Yeah, we believe we can, at one classroom at this time.
You know, the recommendation and study that they were up to, from eight to 10 rooms at that time.
And we currently have some classrooms at Lincoln this year that sit vacant during the day.
Completely.
Completely. Part of the reason is, is our teachers aren't teaching six out of seven now, so that has led to a staff reduction. If we did move, the teachers would be traveling again like they, like they used to, you know, you leave a classroom and someone would come in during that, during that prep time.
So, in other words, teachers may not have a classroom for prep?
Correct.
They may go somewhere else.
We currently have offices for all our departments at Lincoln and under previous administration, those were probably used quite frequently because that was where the teachers went during their prep time. Currently, we don't need to double, double book a classroom for a teacher to have prep in that classroom and then also to have a classroom, it's vacant during antidebut.
We know that body count, I mean, body-wise, there's, because we've been up to 1,600.
I think the first year that we're forecasting, if it would be in two years, it'd be 1535, I think is the number for, or 1565 because our current sophomore class is the la, is the largest class in the district. And so, once they graduate, I think it drops down to 1520 or 1530, that would be at Lincoln.
I mean, the question, I mean, you know, philosophically, we may agree, you know, Ron has done some, some scheduling as you're indicating and, and looking at where we need a wall and so there were some, you know, costs.
And then the other, other issues, what's wrong?
We would have to go back to three, we'd go to three lunches. Currently, we have two lunches under the current year's schedule and which we'll maintain for next school year. We would go back to the three lunches and as we talked about in January, when I did the scheduling update, we're looking at a different schedule also at Lincoln and that plays into this also.
What would that do?
What would that do? How would play into the...
Yeah, if ninth grade were there.
If ninth grade were there, I have to run that if that's the decision that we continue to move for. I don't think it would change because your still, teachers are still teaching 12 sections. So, I don't think the, the physical space would change because teachers would still be teaching 12 sections. There'd be no change in the number of that FTE requirement.
My, I'll tell you, my concerns right up front are that it's scheduled very tight already just from, from a first glance. And then I'm also concerned, what if we had more students for whatever reason? How, you know, what's, what's the capacity going to be? And frankly, with a programmatic change, I don't know. And, and when you looked at this back in 2005, certainly the numbers have changed and probably some of the programs. So, it's, it's one of those things that I guess we're looking to you to say, okay, and stop with that for a minute, say, okay, if, if ninth grade goes to Lincoln, then what? There's a domino effect. And so, then we look at, we have East now with eighth graders. Do we just have eighth graders at East? Do we look at a 6-7-8 configuration at East? We've started to look at that just to see what happens. It could be scheduled, again, it's very tight. We looked at the middle school as well. You know, that's, that's a decision, that's a 6-7-8. If, if that were a configuration, would that be here at East? Would it be at, at Rams? We also looked at, you know, do we do a 5-6 and a 7-8? And then you have K4 buildings. We were looking at a 6-7-8 because we felt it reduced transitions. And it's, I think it's difficult for kids to get attached to a building and teachers in a two-year timeframe. I mean, they're, they're jumping from elementary to middle school to junior high to high school. We had three transitions before we restructured. We'd be going back to three transitions instead of four. I don't know if, we have, many of the people sitting out here are members of the Facilities Committee and I don't know if there are things that you would like to add or, or interject at this point? Anybody who's... No? Okay. I'm just giving the option, I told him I would. So, I think, I think the fundamental question really is, do you think ninth grade, you know, belongs, belongs at, at the high school? What I don't want to do is bring some, I didn't want to bring a recommendation to you until we really have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed and I don't, we're not there. And we've gone around and around about a number of things and really looked at a lot of detail, a lot of numbers and we just, I think, need direction from you, not a vote necessarily, but yes, keep pursuing this. We think ninth grade belongs probably at Lincoln. We'd like to get some real detail on that.
I guess, in my opinion philosophically, ninth graders belong in high school. They're, they're being graded for high school credit. Their expectations are they'll take high school programming. I just hope that we don't box ourselves up too tight.
That's tight decision.
Who knows what's going to happen in this community? We don't seem to have something sitting out there that's going to drop a influx of people here, but it's, you don't want to be to the point where you have an increase of 100 students and all of a sudden, you're having to go to a referendum to build the classroom space to handle.
Or the, the bigger elephant in the room is we got two fairly well-remodeled buildings, East and Rams, what do you do with them then? I mean, you can't very well mothball those two big buildings.
Well, we have eighth grade still that needs to be somewhere.
Right.
And sixth and seventh grade.
Right, right.
So, if, if you do a 6-7-8 and, and let's say they, if we scheduled them into Rams or into East, we laid out kind of pros and cons and, and what that would cost. And again, this is our estimate, this is Ed helping us with, with some of this work footage, issues that he knows about. Ron actually had somebody come and take a look, you know, at the building as far as putting up a wall, taking out a wall. We need to look at then, if, if, if we're at East, what do we do with Rams? Do we make that an elementary? I mean, the conversation just keeps moving along. Do we make that a large elementary? So, you know, where does it, where does it lead to?
Other thoughts?
Just like full circle, but you were talking about the transitions. I know, back in the day, I went to Grove School, it was K4 and then Woodside was 5-6-7 and then, you know, but you're talking about how many transitions the kids had, but I don't think, I don't think that's a big deal personally. I mean, because I was, I lived in the same block my entire life and I went to kindergarten at Woodside, first second, third, fourth at Grove and then fifth, sixth, seventh at Woodside and then eighth and ninth at West. No, eighth at West, ninth at East, that was when the changeover was. I mean, so, I mean, and, but you're not the only person, so you've got, you know, a group of kids are all together kind of, there's a, I don't think the transitions are each day. I do think it is scary, the idea that if we run out of space at the high school because it sounds like it's just too confined right now, what we're looking at right now.
Well, and again, if you look at, at doing nothing, then the conversation's going to shift and it's going to be, okay, what do you, what do you want to put into the buildings that we have as far as what the structural needs are? Would it be helpful for you to see that listing of...
Yes.
Dollars and cents that would be needed to buildings?
We need to, yeah, I mean, I know he's been working on it, but I'd like to see.
We had it before in 2005.
But that's 2004.
Right, I know, but I mean, we had it before and it was helpful then, so it's helpful now.
You know, I, yes, I would have to say I agree, the 9-12, it should be, but Lincoln was never built to be a 9-12 building. So, it wasn't designed and I do have concerns about, you know, athletic space, you know, you're bringing a full grade over there, they have different health classes, they have different needs, right, you know, and scheduling the rooms tight, you know, in the lack of facilities and the gym class and the space and everything else, you know, and then, you know, if we're going to schedule with all the increased credits in science, you know, do we really need two science rooms, not one? Even though as we go forward, because, you know, if, if we have the ninth grades over there, then they're going to have some, some added, added needs too. I, I know when we went through this whole thing, we were looking at building utilization and one guy said, oh, yeah, schedule it 95%. And he said, no, we don't understand, we can't. Just because if you had, you know, one issue of an expansion of 20 students, we'd throw off that whole building, you know, that type of thing. And that's my concern is if we do make a change and if something would come in with, with around science or something with, with, you know, some of those other software companies coming in and, and bringing, hopefully bringing workforce back into the community, what would we do if we had an increase of 50 or 60 students?
Oh, we also want to plan for the future in the sense that East isn't going to last probably forever.
No.
I mean, it's a very good sound structure and Ed would say probably 20 more years, but you also want to be thinking beyond us sitting at this table, what do we envision? What do we envision?
John and Mitch Athletics, right now, we're trying, most ninth graders come up for practices and such and very few that would...
I'm referring to gym class.
Yeah, and we feel we have enough stations for that, you know, with that department between the upper gym and the stations, the weight room and the pool. I mean, we're, we're fortunate to have that athletic area that we do. The other area that I failed to mention, there will be subscale of efficiency if freshmen move because if they offer a class of Ultra One of 24 here and we offer, so there is some scale of efficiency which I did not build it initially and I think that's why Dr. Digman originally said, if you're philosophically with the 9-12, we need to dive in. I'm not an architect, I don't get all this square footage, you need to dive in a little bit more on that.
Well, no further, I mean, I have the same concerns that John's talking about, but with what you're just saying too, I think that opens up some possibilities. There are some ninth graders who maybe would take a class that they wouldn't have normally taken that would have been offered at the high school, but they had to be bussed over for whatever reason, they weren't able to take the class and then they have that opportunity to open them to maybe, you know, explore other areas that maybe they wouldn't have done before or to take other classes that they wouldn't, maybe wouldn't have had the opportunity to take before.
And I would echo the same. I think philosophically, they belong together. I'm just concerned about the space.
Right.
What do our students think?
Well, that's a ninth grader, I probably would have liked to be at Lincoln just because you're supposed to act like you're in high school, but you're still treated like you're in middle school, so maybe treated more like high school and that would help me. That's like a best.
Well, if, if philosophically, you would suggest, yeah, you think it's a 9-12, but there are some concerns and I think we, as a group, are meeting again later this week, I think we're hearing what the concerns are. Would you be willing, you know, Ed's been in touch with, with Steve Kikefer, he's worked with us multiple times and has actually done the last kind of capacity study.
I think we, we still would not be able to make time.
I agree.
I, I don't know what the cost of it was last time though, that he came and did such a study and do you have an idea of what, he, he did a, he did a very comprehensive, I mean, you could, you could spend $12,000 to have a facility piece. I'm not interested in that, that kind of an expenditure, I wouldn't want to go even beyond $5,000 if we had to come in and do anything and I don't know if you would be willing to have us go that direction, but I, we don't need a, there's a lot that we can do because we know what the programs are and what the spaces are and how we can shift kids around and then utilize space, but...
Well, he would have a lot of the background that he did in 2005.
But that's 10, I mean, it's, it's a 2004 actually and that's 10 years ago.
Right, the building changes.
The fire codes may have changed, the capacities and...
From a facilities standpoint, I think that we have a pretty good handle on maintenance needs, future maintenance needs.
Yeah.
The part that we don't have is the new programming, you know, the, the RTI stuff built into the scheduling now and, you know, space needs are, are different where the space is the same. I mean, that's kind of the, the missing piece. I know architects, they'll, they'll do a facility study from a maintenance and budget and upkeep standpoint and then they also do educational space studies. So, you know, how much room is needed for a science classroom? How many classrooms are needed for X number of kids?
Yes.
And that's maybe the part that we need help with.
And I would think we, we'd remiss not to get that done before we make any decisions on that. I mean, we ought to know that the facility, I mean, if it comes back and says you're going to need six more classrooms, we're going to need to know that before we make that decision.
And, and we think we could make it work, but we would like to have some expert in this field because we don't want to go forward and then find out what really doesn't work and we should have accessed that expertise at that time.
The department has been kind of encouraging schools for years now to take their 18 to 21-year-old programs and move them out of high school buildings so that they truly are away from that school setting, more like that search pieces is trying to move students to. There are some classrooms that are housing those, those students and a lot of districts have been able to take that jump. It's something that could be looked at. I, I'm going to say that we have some parents and it's hard for our department in terms of the transitions, duplicating the programming and, and equipment needs for the more severe handicaps. It's, Rams was set up with a lot of equipment to handle the very serious and significant physical health needs. We have tracks, we have lifts and things for changing larger students. That's not built into this building over here. We had, when I was at my prior district, just gone to the 6-7-8-9 and then 10-12 high school piece and worked through some of those issues. In special ed, it cost us additional staff because we were recreating in two buildings and then we ended up doing something a little bit different. State said it was okay, but the very significant, who really have a hard time getting used to a building, it takes longer for them to get very attuned to what's going on and staff to be consistent. It takes a long time to get to know some of our kids. They would stay an extra year at the middle school level, skip the junior high and, and go straight to Lincoln. And we've done that with a few students here to ease up on one of those transitions. And we've done that with a few students here to ease up on one of those transitions. So there are some other pieces there that, for the average student, you know, popping through a few different buildings at a time, it's not that big of a deal. But for some students, it's pretty bad, not bad, it's pretty difficult. And it sets us back with them, you know, emotionally and academically for a while until they can recover.
Any other questions on this discussion?
So we'll, we'll continue to pursue. And perhaps at our June meeting that report, a proposal for, I mean, like, senior to do some further study?
Can I have a just a, on this last page of this grade handout? When you say that it's difficult to shutter East Junior High, what does shutter, what do you mean by that?
To close the building, or just to close it and vacate it. Difficult to sense, you know, that it's still, it's still a viable, it's still a viable building.
Okay. What does that have to do with central office and technology? Because they, they're only adults and they don't listen to the fire alarm?
The heating system's all part of the building.
If you shut that down, this isn't working. Essentially, it's all connected.
Okay.
That's one building.
Okay.
So if you were to shutter East Junior High, for example, and close it down.
Got it.
We'd need to go somewhere.
You mean close it down completely, not just for a, okay, that's what I didn't understand.
Kathy, do you have anything to add to that? Was that part of that discussion? The reason I'm asking Kathy is because she was at the, at this, at the G O B.
I think in talking about the six, eight configuration, we've talked a lot about whether it would be better to place six, eight at Rams or East. And which building would be more beneficial and provide the needs of the six, eight student. And one of the things we discussed is if we put the six, eight at Rams, where would central office and the technology departments go? They really wouldn't fit into any other building because we would be maximizing our capacity at the other buildings by doing this. We wouldn't have the, you know, vacant space in buildings that perhaps we have now. And so that left a big hole, if you will. So that's why we, we felt it was important to note that. If, if we did put the six, eight at Ram, at Rams and closed East, we'd still really need to run East just for the adults in central office and in technology. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but. You know, what about Children's Choice, is there room there? That's for a different discussion.
If you keep River Cities where it is now, we pretty much use that building to its capacity. There's a few vacant rooms there, but not more than two. So you couldn't accommodate technology and central office at, at River Cities.
So, so what we're going to do is, is we're going to really get some detail on, if, if we move ninth grade, we'll, we'll try to figure out who we want to speak with and find out what the cost will be to have someone with expertise come and confirm that with us or work through some of those details with us. Once we see whether that works or not and you as a board vote, yes, we want to move ninth grade to Lincoln, we decide when. And we also then need to have what, what might be the next step and that would be the next part of that discussion. And we'll have, again, some options that we've already started looking at, available to. If you have any comments or, or thoughts as we, you know, as the days go by or the weeks go by and we don't see each other, you know, feel free to give me a call and we'll include that in our discussion. Anybody else have anything on, out there? I just don't want to, many of the committee members are here, so I don't want to overlook this too much.
Nope.
Just as far as the six, eight concept, curricularly, just like nine, twelve fit together, six, eight fit together as well. And when we, we as a committee talked a lot about the transition piece. And, you know, behaviorally, kids at that six, eight level struggle and relationships are very important. And that's why the committee was leaning toward the six, eight configuration, if we can make it fit. And the reason is, then you can create those relationships, create that identity with the school and hopefully eliminate some of those behavior issues. Whereas the, the model we have now, the kids are in, they're out, they're in, they're out. But of course, we have to make sure we have the capacity in the buildings. We also could do, I mean, eighth grade usually fits with a middle school model. You know, are there some better curricular things we could do with those eighth graders if they're with those sixth and seventh graders? So those are all conversations that we've been having that I think are important to think about.
And now move on to discussion of possible action to approve moving the district virtual school elementary program from Vesper Community Academy to the Grant Elementary site location beginning in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
At the previous month's regular board meeting, we had brought forward the agenda item of our review of the virtual programs, review of switching locations. As I had described at that point in time, some of the issues that we're taking a look at is space availability at Vesper, given their needs for regular brick and mortar instruction, as well as the fact that our number of families taking advantage of the Friday experience of the virtual program has expanded out to where we have three different classrooms that, that we've been running at the four K through grade five level. In addition to the fact that we're looking to be able to expand our in-building tutoring activities that we're running with parents. In other words, as we've expanded, it's become increasingly difficult for the virtual teaching staff to make home visits, to catch up on instruction and provide tutoring services. We'd like to encourage more of a model of having our teaching staff available in a building that we would encourage our parents to bring their children into. And with the vast number of our, of our families that are participating in district, are here closer in and around the city of Rapids. And the fact that more of our non-resident families are now coming from areas like Stevens Point. Our recommendation, I hope it would be to move the, the virtual program to operate out of the Grant Elementary building. And looking at the district facilities here closer in and around the city of, of Wisconsin Rapids. Grant Elementary has the, the most space available for us to be able to, to move in and utilize rooms that are available there. So I, I guess I'd like to, to be able to reveal any questions that, that board members may have.
Does it affect on, on Fridays? Isn't Vesper Community Academy have partial day and then the specials are expanded for virtual students to come in? How does that impact the classrooms at Grant, where they have a full day of instruction on Friday?
It, it would involve needing to make some modifications to the way in which the specials schedule would operate. As you're alluding to, John, there is, there's, as far as music and, and art and P E classes are a little bit more heavily loaded on those Fridays right now to be able to accommodate those additional sections. What this would involve then would be modifying the special schedule at the elementary level so that there are, there's more special sections added to Grant. And would need to specifically be scheduled in to those Friday afternoons.
You did a survey on some of the, the parents or the families from the virtual school and did they have any comments or concerns about it?
We, we've not heard any, any strong opposition against it.
Have you spoken, have you spoken to them?
The staff has had communication with them about what our, our intent is. And, you know, I have not received any contact on the negative side of things. And, you know, it, it really is hard to know exactly what sort of impact it's going to have or exactly how many students are going to show on those Fridays until we make that shift. But the other thing as far as participation, right now, if we're talking geographically, we have, and I, there's, we have one family that is right in Vesper that attends on Fridays. And we have one family, and the, the Vesper family, it varies from week to week, not all of the kids come. There are some older students that are, that are secondary levels, so they wouldn't be attending anyway. So it does vary, but we're talking three or four students from in Vesper. And then we have one family of two students from Arpen that is open enrolled in from the Alderdale School District. Geographically speaking, that's, that's all we have number wise that are attending Vesper on Fridays. The rest are, are coming from, are coming from here closer to city proper, as well as we have some families coming from Adams. We have a family from Adams Friendship, some families from Nukusa that are attending.
How would we approve the move of the virtual school from Vesper grade?
Second.
No further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the moving of the district virtual school elementary program from the Vesper Community Academy building to the Grant Elementary site location beginning in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, that's all we have under new business, so with that.
We have some calendar.
Oh, we have some calendar, I think, yes.
I think Dan does for the negotiate, I guess, transportation.
We did contact our contractors, our construction contractors. All of them are available on Wednesday. Al Bemers would not be available on Monday, so.
Which Wednesday?
Pardon me, Thursday. Which Wednesday? And.
It was May nineteenth and May twenty-first were the two days that were given.
That's next week. Is there a time? We had, we had a slot of time between eleven and four. We probably want to meet as a committee prior to meeting with the contractors. Do you have a time in preference?
We're going to be with them for five hours?
No. So if you want to meet at eleven, maybe us as a committee should meet at eleven and then maybe half hour later. So eleven thirty or is that?
That's okay.
Okay. I will notify them Wednesday at eleven thirty for the full team and then just our committee would be at eleven o'clock.
Where?
It'd be here at East and to, it'll either be in this room or the conference room C, I'm not sure which one's open. Hopefully one of them's open.
Which stairs?
Wednesday, the twenty-first.
This is twenty, that, it's the twenty-first.
My first is Wednesday.
It'd be twenty-first on Wednesday, the twenty-first of next week.
At eleven o'clock for us.
And then eleven thirty with the.
All right, anything else? Okay, with that clear.
Yes, one announcement, I don't know if John mentioned or not, we're planning the virtual tour, for the virtual.
Second at four thirty.
Yes, at four thirty, thank you.
Okay. Now, with that cleared, thank you Emily and Chris, you're welcome.
Ed, I enjoyed learning more about you in the paper.
Yes, very nice.
It was very nice.